Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get approval of the regular agenda?
Move to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda, I get a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Staff agenda items, Brad is online, I believe, with us. Brad, would you, before we open the public hearing, would you like to talk us through the consideration of Resolution 2025-15, order improvements for the 2026 Street Improvement Project?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor said, we're here tonight to conduct the public improvement hearing for the 2026 Street Improvement Project, which includes 66th Street North and Great Oak Trail North. The street improvement project petition were declared at the June 3 regular council meeting, and at that council meeting, staff was directed to prepare a feasibility report. Within that feasibility report, the costs of the project were identified at approximately $370,000. The street, or the city has allocated approximately $37,000 for the street improvement, with the rest of the funding coming from special assessments. I would like to note, too, that during this whole process, we conducted two neighborhood meetings. One before the feasibility report was prepared, just to share information with the residents adjacent to the streets, the city's policy on special assessments. And then the second meeting was after we prepared the feasibility report to explain in more detail the mock assessments that came out of the feasibility report. In either case, at either meeting for both streets, we did not hear any dissent from any of the residents regarding the street improvement project, meaning they wanted to keep moving forward with the process of going through the street improvement project process. The other thing I would like to mention, too, is that all the residents were notified of this public hearing tonight via regular mail, and it was also posted in the city's official newspaper, in accordance with the minimum 10-day notice. So, again, with that said, Mayor, I would turn over the meeting back to you to conduct the hearing.
Yep, so we'll open the public hearing, and we'll have council discussion. So I'd like to get a motion for opening the public hearing.
Second.
Public hearing is open.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson, sorry, Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
All right, would anyone like to speak, public hearing?
I can't remember your name. Okay, this is, this is a street. I'm Carrie Casta, live at 1100666th Street, North in Grant. We did have an initial meeting, a local neighborhood meeting, but I think the costs were a little bit, a little different than what was sent out. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, and you guys can verify it, it looks like they're almost double of what was originally discussed. One of the things that Brad wasn't sure of at the time, either, was what the proration time was gonna be. You know, I mean, that tends to make a little bit of difference when budgeting, especially when the numbers double what we initially talked about. Some of my concerns, and while I understand, you know, we wanna, we wanna have a nice road in front of us, the road really has not been maintained, it hasn't been maintained at all. I mean, unless you wanna call painting it black, and then shortly thereafter, coming over and filling a few little potholes in here and there. It's not that old a road. So, if we do go through with this, I guess, as somebody that's investing in that road, I'd like to know what's gonna be done to assure us as residents, how our investment's gonna be spent, and, and what, what it's gonna look like with regard to maintaining it, you know, or are we gonna just do this every 15 years or so? Now, I might not even be there in 15 years, you know, you just never know. But, that being said, my kids might, or somebody else might, and they shouldn't have to take another whack to build a whole new road all over again, since this road really isn't that old. So, I feel like there's a few questions that I personally would like answered, you know, and I don't, maybe I'll just get out voted, I, I don't know, but I, either way, I'd like some, some questions answered, since I'm gonna be paying a portion of it. I don't know if you can do that, or who can do that, but it'd be nice.
We can talk about it after we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, my name's Brian Winter, I also live on 66th, so, kinda like Carrie said, you know, my initial message on this road was, again, you know, half of this to maybe $10,000 at most, at $15,000, I just, I vote my dissent, I just, the road is in need, but it's not, I don't think it needs to be totally ripped up and redone and all that, at a cost of $15,000-plus per, on a thing, so, I, I'm just not in favor of the project, and maybe looking at alternative things for a lot less money. Simple as that.
Do you want neighborhood dissent? I'm Sue Lund, we live at 1107666, and we're at the end of the cul-de-sac, and the road is horrible, the farther you go down, the worse it gets. And it's full of potholes, I mean, it's, it's hor, we have grandkids, and they, you know, go down the middle of the street, because otherwise you will fall in a pothole. So, it does need repair, and I guess my concern is, when we first moved in there, the road was beautiful, and it's really gone downhill, and like Carrie said, it was just kind of a slap-over paint job. I'm willing to be part of this, 'cause I want a nice road for investment of our property. So, again, I think my question is, will the city continue to maintain it? If we replace it, maintain it to the level that it should be, and not let it deteriorate? Because when we moved in, the builder, I think, did the road, and I, what I heard from Brad, it was not the best construction it should've been. That being said, we all moved in after, so, we didn't know, but now we do, and we have that information. So I guess I would like the, the city to be invested into it, too. If we say yes, we're for it, let's maintain it and keep it nice, so, thank you.
Oh, can I put in two more cents? Just a quick one on that one, and, and I guess that's part of my concern, is, okay, the road is going to pot, we get that, we need to do something about it, but initially, the city of Grant, you know, and, and it, it looks like they're, they're gonna put in their share as well, but initially, the city of Grant should've been responsible for saying, "The road needs to be built in these particular parameters." It doesn't sound like that was done. So, somebody paid for a road, got off cheap, because Grant allowed them to, so now the road's totally going to pot, and they're coming back to the residents, saying, "We're gonna whack you $15,000, because the road's going to pot," when it shouldn't have been in the first place. I mean, because I don't believe, and I, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but when, when we had the discussion initially, Brad had kind of explained what, what he thought was going on, but, you know, he didn't know some of the details, and, you know, whether the road was, why it was going the way it was, but, but I just, I feel like, if the city allowed it to go in in an incorrect manner in the first place, maybe they need to kick in a little bit more than normal. That's just my two cents.
Scott Mulgren, 1103366th Street. I, I would concur that the maintenance of the road was probably not, well, the way it appears, it wasn't taken care of, and there's some really good points here about if this is gonna be, you know, updated or changed. I would also like to know what is in it, you know, for, for the residents that are gonna be, you know, paying for some of this, and along with Brian's comment, is there an in-between on this thing? I mean, is there something, I don't know, I mean, I'm just wondering. A new road is, is nice, obviously it's nice, but I, it, I don't know if I, we ever really talked about that, and then, and with the cost being higher than we originally were, were, you know, told, I just would wonder if there's something that could be chatted, you know, we could talk about that way. So that, those are my thoughts.
Larry Linoan, I realize we've got developments coming into our town, and part of the problem is, like Woodland Acres, some of the other Victoria Station, when those were originally put in, yes, the city required that they be blacktopped, but they didn't require them to be blacktopped to a standard. Now, if you go back, WSB, which was a good engineering firm, in fact, Brad, Brad said worked for them, we did a study on the roads, and you'll find that a lot of the roads in Grant have only got two inches of blacktop on them. That means that you can't do a one-inch milling overlay on a road, because you simply can't mill one inches off of two inches of blacktop. So, you're stuck doing a total reconstruct, so, moving forward, I would recommend that the city set a standard to a five- or seven-ton road, should have three and a half inches of a base, first off, you should have a good base, but then you should have three and a half inches of base asphalt, and an inch and a half of wear course, so that, a good example, Fran Myron came to our city council years ago and explained how and why you correct the roads at our end disrepair, and we were talking about grading them at that time, somebody thought, well, we already had a grader, but we weren't talking about road graders, we're talking about actually grading the roads, and which you can save, and that's, you know, a good example is McCusick Avenue, used to be a county road, the county turned it over to the city, and they said, "We'll give you McCusick if you give us Jamica," and they did a great job putting in Jamica, and they maintained it. Our city took over McCusick, looks like a third-world country. That being said, moving forward with these developments, or any roads that, I recommend you put it in to a standard that allows for milling overlay in the future, so that you can take a 30-year road and extend it to a 50-year use, thank you.
Anyone else, do we have anyone online? So Brad, we had some questions there. Oh, yeah, we need to close, so, yeah.
Want to close the public hearing?
Second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
So Brad, I don't know if you took note, we had some questions there on the, the standards of the roads. How old is the current road, how long will the new one expect to last? What will we do to maintain it properly? Will it be constructed differently, and have a longer life than the current road? And Larry mentioned five-to-seven-ton standards, I believe we have a nine-ton standard, is that correct, Brad?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct, it's, it's more than just the pavement thickness itself, but it's the underlying aggregate base as well. So we've been building our, most of the roads that we have reconstructed, have a minimum of seven inches of Class V below the existing pavement before we do the reclaim. Typically, once we reclaim, there's anywhere between eight and 12 inches of Class V aggregate below these roads. I wanna say the 66th Street Road has approximately 12 to 15 inches of Class V underneath the existing pavement. So, that would, that roadway would, would meet that nine-ton design standard. And as far as Great Oak Trail, again, I think the underlying gravel there was anywhere between seven and 12 inches as well. And with the three-inch petunias pavement, you know, that, that design standard is, is met. As far as the maintenance goes, I know that's always been a big, big issue, but, but over the last 10 years, the city of Grant has been committed to doing the maintenance in a timely manner, meaning, once we re, we reclaim the roadways, put the new petunias pavement over the new road, cracks are gonna start to form in that pavement, typically, if not one year, two years after the pavement is laid. And so the council, over the last 10 years, has been committed to doing these crack seals on these newer roads, and, and we've been doing them pretty consistently, every two years, since we've reconstructed these roads. So, I know, in the past, anyway, the councils have been pretty consistent in making sure that we at least do the crack sealing for the roads, the newer roads that we pave. As far as, you know, alternatives for paving these roads, we have done, in certain circumstances, we have just done a two-inch overlay on top of some of the existing pavements. The last time we did that was on 65th Street, and that was about five or six years ago, and that seems to be holding up fairly well, but the condition of that existing pavement was in a lot better shape than what I'm seeing out on 66th Street and Great Oak Trail.
Is it, Brad, just interjection, is that why?
Yep.
You didn't maybe discuss the overlay as a potential in-between option, because the road was just too bad?
That's, that's correct, we, we didn't explore that option in the feasibility report. I know I had mentioned it at the neighborhood meetings, but in my observation of the existing pavement, it just didn't seem like a two-inch overlay would be the most cost-effective way to, to reconstruct these, these two roads. And I, and I get it, I mean, I, I think one of the, the issues, and I think I told this to the residents at our, our meetings, is that the data that we're using to do our estimates early on is just GIS data, and some of the data that we had for 66th Street was not correct. So, we go out and we survey the streets, so that we have really good areas that we can measure, and for some reason, the cul-de-sac wasn't included with the original GIS information that I had, so it was, the, the cost estimates were lower than what we expected. Again, I, when I, when I put these cost estimates together for the feasibility report, I try to be conservative, so that when we get to the, the bidding of the project, or even award, that the prices for the assessments and the construction and the project cost will come down. And that's been the case on every project that I've, I've, I've bid in the city of Grant so far. So I'm not expecting, you know, prices to go up from, from what I've shown in the feasibility report. But, you never know, right? But again, I'm hoping that prices were higher than, or the cost estimates were higher than, you know, what we'll receive in bids, and the, the assessments would go down from, from those estimated costs that are in the feasibility report.
So you did, you did, so you did basically like you usually do, is worst-case estimate in terms of the feasibility report?
Correct, I, I try to be very conservative with my unit costs in the feasibility report.
And so what was the, what was the last percent in favor? When you had the last meeting with the latest estimates?
Yeah, so I wanna say that 90% of the residents on 66th Street were in favor of the project. And, and we haven't seen any written comments, or emails from any residents that were no longer in favor of it. But again, this, this was the opportunity, again, you know, we had the opportunity at a neighborhood meeting for, for people to let us know, the city know, that they were no longer in favor of the project, and this would be the second opportunity. So now we've got some folks that seem like they're, they're no longer in favor of the project, and so I guess, you know, you'll, the council will have to consider that.
So the, the current road's life was what, 15 years, I think, somewhat, is that accurate? There's 15 years since it was?
No, I, I wanna, I wanna say both these roads were built in the early to late, or early to mid 1990s.
Okay, so they're, oh.
Twenty-five to 30 years old.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's the records I have.
Yeah, which is, which is pretty long, I guess, for average lifespan of a road. And you, you did talk about the, the increased maintenance that we're allocating towards roads, so we should be able to keep ahead of the, the maintenance, and, and get the, the proper maintenance done before the alligator cra, alligator cracking starts, and should extend the life of these roads to the maximum, according to our current road budget?
That, that is correct, we, again, we try to, it's, it's very important that we're timely with the crack sealing, right? To keep the water from entering the, the cracks and, and causing, you know, in the springtime, when you get those freeze-thaw cycles, that's when you tend to get the, the water problems on the roadway, so if we can make sure that we get on the, the crack sealing. Again, it's usually not until year two after the pavement has been put down, is when you'll typically see the first cracks form. So it's, it's important that we get on those cracks, and again, you know, past councils have been pretty supportive of, of doing that work. It's fairly inexpensive, and so we've been, we've been pretty diligent about doing that.
Okay, John, you had a question?
I did, so, if this road was, you know, 25, 30 years old, what is your estimate of this reconstruction? What's the life of the road, assuming that you do the, the crack sealing, or fog sealing, whatever you do? What's the life of the road that you're expecting to put in?
So, again, I would conservatively say 35 years, but if we're really diligent about doing the crack sealing, you could easily extend it another five to 10, but the other step that's important, too, is, at some point, you're gonna need to do a, either a crack seal or a fog seal, and those are a little bit more expensive, maintenance repairs that need to be done to streets. So that's something to consider in the future, but, again, we've been seeing these streets last for 30 years without much maintenance on them at all, so I'm fairly confident that we can go to at least 35 or 40 years, just doing the simple crack sealing, and maybe occasional fog seals, so.
And, and you follow up, those are at the, on the city's budget, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Lindsay?
That's actually my question is, we do these roads, how far can we extend it out? You already answered it, so, thank you.
Come on, you have a whole bunch of questions today.
Took a lot of notes.
Ben?
No, he's answered pretty much everything. Just to ensure, like, I know that we, in our proposed budget, we allocated a lot of dollars, and I might be kind of just reiterating something, like that fog seal and crack seal, that's something that we're now being more diligent on, to make sure that we don't have these similar issues as we had in the past, so it doesn't get to a point where that doesn't alleviate, like, a widespread issue of the road, with our increased budget, and that's what that's, like, going to go help, correct?
That is, that is correct, it's, it's, like I said, it's, it's really important to do that crack sealing in a timely manner, just to extend the life of these pavements, so, dollars have been allocated in our current budget for the streets that we've paid over the last 10 years, and then, moving forward with, with streets as we, you know, get petitions to reconstruct them.
And then, just, this is my own ignorance, but was that in the past, like, just not done in a timely manner, so that that's why these issues seem to be exacerbated to this point?
Um, you know, I don't know what happened before my time at the city, as far as the maintenance goes.
Yeah.
I know there was some seal coating done, right, in prior years, and some crack sealing as well, but it really takes a full-time effort to stay on top of the maintenance, meaning, you gotta have a good, effective plan, right, the one, kinda like the one that we put together, and you've gotta have somebody that stays on top of it, whether it's me, or another city engineer, or what have you, right? You need, you need somebody within the city to make sure that they stay on top of the maintenance of these roadways, otherwise, they're not gonna last.
All right, that's on you, thank you.
And, Lindsay, you have another question?
You go.
Resident Road.
All right, couple things. The process, obviously, we, we're having the improvement hearing tonight. In the resolution, Brad, I think the council received your report on October 7, not June 3, we should probably make that note in the resolution before we consider it. But, standard practice, if we move ahead with the improvements tonight, Brad puts plans and specs together, brings them back, and go off to bed. The assessment hearing has been done at the end of the project, right? That's why he had the schedule laid out in his feasibility report, has that been the practice in the city?
I'll link that to Brian.
Councilmember Anderson, I was having a really hard time hearing you.
Okay, sorry.
Can you repeat that?
Try to pull your mic a little closer.
The past projects, the council has held the assessment hearing after the project's complete?
Yeah, so, we've done it both ways, but I would recommend that we do the assessment hearing at the time of award of the construction contract.
That way, that way the resident.
That way.
The council knows the cost before we enter into a contract, or if there's gonna be some objections to the assessment, so that would be my recommendation, is we maybe consider that for this project. So what would happen is, once the bids are back, we'd have the actual assessments, we could have the assessment hearing before we award the contract to do the work. Then, if, for something goes wrong in the field, and there's a little bit of cost overruns, that would end up being on the city, that's probably why they were done at the end of the project before, to capture all the projects, but I think a couple of people that spoke tonight, you know, the concern about the cost being different than proposed, you know, Brad gave these estimates, usually the estimates are high, been my experience, but that way, before we move ahead and do the project, we know what the actual assessment numbers would be for the residents. And you're confirming, Brad, that that's how we're gonna have this process?
That is, that is correct, if that's the council's wish, then we can certainly do it that way. We've done it both ways for projects in the city.
Yeah, so if we did it that way, would we have to update the feasibility report? Because right now, it looks like we have it set, that we would assess it after the project?
We wouldn't necessarily have to change the schedule of the feasibility report.
We could just switch it.
Yep.
For my own sake, could you, you talked about crack sealing and fog sealing, it sounds like we do crack sealing more than fog sealing. Does one extend the road longer, I'm assuming one is cheaper than the other, and that plays a role?
So the crack sealing is very important to do, every two years. The fog seals, we've been using over the older roads, just because there's so many cracks, the fog seal will fill all the cracks. The fog seal is a little more expensive than the crack sealing, and it tends not to last. The fog seal is a little more expensive than the crack sealing and it tends not to last as long as the crack sealing. But again, we've been doing that because it's more cost-effective to try to seal as many cracks as we possibly can with a fog seal. I wouldn't necessarily recommend it for a newer road until maybe year ten, depending on, again, the number of cracks that are in the pavement. It's really a case-by-case basis for each street.
That's fair.
Any more questions? So it looks like we're ready to entertain a motion, which will probably include the tweaks that we talked about, the correcting the date on the council receiving the resolution and then switching the assessment hearing around to be at the time of award. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five-fifteen with the changes you mentioned.
I'll second him.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Next, we have another one for Brad, consideration of County seventeen and thirty-six working hours request. This is seemed pretty straightforward. Brad, just want to do a quick recap of this for us?
Sheriff, Mayor, members of the council, this item here is to consider working hours outside of the city's noise ordinance for constructing, construction activity for a Washington County-led project for Lake, I'm sorry, Lake Elmo Avenue and Highway thirty-six. Currently, the county is at about a ninety-five percent design completion and they are hoping to get this project bid in early January. With those bid documents, they would like to specify the working hours for the project. And so they've asked the city to formally approve working hours that are beyond the city's normal construction activity work hours. Again, the city's work hours typically in the noise ordinance are from seven AM to six PM. And the county is requesting working hours Monday through Friday from six AM to eight PM. Saturdays from seven AM to six PM and Sundays from eight AM to six PM. Now, the current noise ordinance doesn't allow work on the weekends. So that's why we thought it would bring, we would bring this to the council's attention and, and seek approval for noise hours just specifically for this construction project so that the county can use the periods of time to speed up construction of this project. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You know, I, I look at where the construction is on the, on the, what would be the south side. How many houses are close by to where the construction is going to be ending on that side? You know, you got the church and, you know, the
Yeah, so I want to say the city limits of Grant and Lake Elmo are on the north frontage road, down the center of the north frontage road. And so there's a lot, so in Grant, we do have a few commercial properties adjacent to this intersection. You've got Cuzzi's and you've got Schiffsky's and the old Carvana. There are some residential neighborhoods, I want to say about fifteen hundred to two thousand feet to the north of this, this intersection. But again, for the most part, most of the businesses or most of the properties adjacent to this project are commercial properties.
But isn't it going to the south side?
Yeah, so there's work on the south side. That's in the Lake Elmo city side. Most of the work is done on the south side of Highway thirty-six. With minimal construction activities or changes on the north, north frontage road.
It just seems that, you know, when you start adding in Saturdays and Sundays, you know, that's, anybody that's close by is gonna hear that, you know, and, you know, I'd hate to, I'd hate to be even close to that because then you, you hear a lot of construction, a lot of diesel engines and, and, you know, Sunday, eight AM to six PM. Isn't that, isn't that a bit much? Considering that we had no weekends on, you know, in our, in our ordinances?
Well, again, this is project-specific, right? And so it wouldn't necessarily mean that the contractor's gonna be working every Saturday and every Sunday through the duration of the project. But I don't have that specific information. And again, I'm assuming the county's gonna have to ask the city of Lake Elmo as well for approvals of, of working hours. Typically, in most cities, they do allow Saturday work, but typically no Sunday work.
I, I would say no Sunday. I mean, Sunday is, I don't know. I wouldn't want to hear anything on a Sunday.
Have we done this before in the past for project-specific where we've extended our noise hours to allow work to happen on the weekends or starting as early as six AM on a weekday?
You know, I'm not aware of anything. I know, I want to say before I, my time here at the city, there was a construction activity in a I want to say a private parcel that had to get a CUP to, to allow them to have working hours above and beyond the city's noise control ordinance. So that was a very unique situation. But I'm not aware of any other projects, at least in the city of Grant, where we've approved hours outside of the normal construction activity hours.
You go.
My only question is, we already have the regular hours. With the weekend hours, are there any of the businesses along the road that that's gonna like greatly impact where there might have like an actual issue with people getting to their establishment? Or will that generally be just a noise issue that we're, we're talking about?
You know, I haven't seen the full completed plans, but I'm, I'm almost certain that there will be times where there will be construction activity in front of some of these businesses. But they will have access to their properties at all times. But there, again, there may be times where they're doing work directly in front of the driveways or things like that where they would not have access. But I, I'm pretty certain that it's the, you know, the idea that these businesses would have access to their property at all times.
Anything else?
Beyond this meeting, do the properties who are likely to be impacted by this have any notification ahead of time that this request is in place, that the county wants to extend the work hours?
You know, I'm not certain that the property owners know that these hours are being proposed by the county. I'm not sure that that information has been shared at a neighborhood meeting. So I can't say for certain.
Doesn't, Brad, doesn't typically the county public works, don't they contact the affected residents and businesses typically?
They have. I mean, they've been in contact with these residents for over the last three and a half years. I, I'm just not certain they've shared the, the working hours that they're, they're requesting.
Yeah, and if they, if they had feedback relevant to this, they would share with us typically the county? I mean.
As far as the neighborhood
As far as, yeah, anyone objecting to it?
Yeah, typically if they have minutes or comments, they, they typically would share them. I have not seen any comments directly related to the working hours though.
And at this point, we have no reason to believe they've been notified. Outside of, obviously, they can look on our website and see that this is in our minutes or in our packet.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's a good segue to what I was gonna say. Can we proactively notify them if we decide to adopt this? So they, so we, we make sure that they know that someone's told them?
Yeah, so we don't have to make a decision on these working hours tonight if the council decides they want to postpone this. I, I don't think from what I understand, the county was looking for approval in the next month or two. And because, you know, we only meet once, once a month, I thought it would be prudent to put it on tonight's agenda, but we can certainly move it if, if council chooses that we can get some more information from the county and see what information they've shared with the local businesses in the surrounding area and, and see if these working hours have been shared with the public.
And I, I understand they want to keep this project on schedule. I mean, have they given us any more information on why they're hoping to extend the hours by having essentially two more full workdays? Do we have any information why it's not currently gonna stay on schedule for fall of twenty-twenty-seven if they don't extend those hours?
Yeah, I, I think they have a pretty, I think they want to get this project done in one construction season. Or at least one, one year. And so that's a pretty aggressive schedule as it is. I don't know if it's regarding whether their funding goal, you know, runs out at a certain point. That's typically why they want to get things done as quickly as they can because of funding considerations. But again, we can get some more information if, if that's what the council would, would like me to do.
I personally would just like a little bit of information. I suspect our people that are affected by this, they want to obviously have the construction done as fast as possible. So it's no longer impacting their business. That said, you know, I think they also would probably want information knowing that, and for me, I wouldn't like to have construction at six AM on a weekday. That said, I understand that doesn't mean that they're actually starting to do work that very, you know, at six oh one. But I personally would just like to get a little bit more feedback of, okay, what happens if we don't approve this? Are we cut down Sunday? You know, how is that gonna prolong the project? So we just have as much information at our fingertips when we make this decision?
Yeah, so you said two months. Was there timeline for
Yeah, I think by the end of this year, right? So we've got one more meeting in December and I, and I can certainly find out exactly when they need a, a decision from us. And again, we don't, you know, we can stick with the regular city hours. I mean, we, we don't have to grant approval of these additional hours.
Also, Brad, we could do a conditional approval, provided that they've reached out to the residents themselves and haven't had any feedback that, I mean, we could
Yeah, I think it's very tough to keep their feet to the fire on that one. I think I would rather just try to get some more information from them
Okay.
and bring this back at the December meeting. But again, that's, that's up to council.
So the Monday, if, if I may, just the Sunday, the, the Monday through Friday, from what our ordinance says versus the Monday through Friday here, that's an extra fifteen hours. So that's basically two working days, just Monday through Friday. And then you say Saturday and that's a, that's another full workday. So you have an extra three workdays just on Saturday. And so I think three extra workdays on the Monday through Saturday. I don't think Sunday is I wouldn't, I just wouldn't do Sunday. I'm sorry. I just, it's just too much. You know, you look at, you look at what they're doing, where Manning was and then the, the hospital they're putting in there. This isn't quiet stuff. So I don't know.
Well, it's a fair question and, you know, I, I think it's good, Brad, if you would follow up with them and, and ask them if they've got feedback from the residents and with full understanding of the implications to the residents too. I mean, if, if they have a choice of expanded work, workdays versus expanded length of the, the project, they might, you know, make it their decision accordingly. So it seems like we're kind of leaning towards tabling it. And then if that's the case, we would need a motion and make sure Brad has clear instruction, which I think you do have, Brad, but
Yeah, the other thing I would suggest, Mayor, is that we check with the city of Lake Elmo as well to see what their noise ordinance are is so that, you know, maybe, maybe what we try to do is just change to match what their working hours are. But I can find out that information as well.
Good point.
That would be good.
So Lindsay, you want to make the motion to table?
Sure, I'll move to table. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five dash six, no, wrong one, apologies. Oh, there isn't a resolution.
Yeah, I don't think there's
Never mind. I moved to table the working hours being extended for the improvement at Lake Elmo Avenue and Highway thirty-six. With the understanding this would come back on the agenda in December, with hopefully we'll have more information from the county relative to the implications of not sticking to this heightened schedule as well as information relative to what contact they've made with the residents. Our businesses are gonna be impacted by this as well as what Lake Elmo has for their hours. Nice and wordy for, got it all in.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so Brad, you're clear. We can, we got a, a motion. We need a second.
A second?
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to the city planner. Jennifer's no items. Amanda, you're up next. You have a consideration of Resolution twenty-two-five dash sixteen, accepting donation of services and authorizing work on behalf of the city. We talked about this last meeting and Amanda's put together the resolution for us. I don't think it's pretty self-explanatory. Does anyone have any questions on the resolution? Or Amanda, is there anything you think you need to add to that? I think it's, it's pretty clear.
No, Your Honor, just noting that obviously you're accepting the, the donation with gratitude and also clarifying that his services do not create some sort of agency relationship, employment relationship, contractor relationship, et cetera.
All right, motion?
I'm motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash sixteen.
Second.
There you go. Get on it.
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
No new business, no unfinished business.
Thank you, Chris.
Discussion items. Do we have any updates from staff? Okay, I have a couple of questions for staff updates. Brad, did you, can you share some of the updates on the property? Excuse me, the situation with the Stillwater Oaks development and the concerns shared by the, the neighboring resident there? We talked about that a little bit, but I just want to give a quick update to the council on that.
Sheriff, Mayor, members of the council, so there was a resident that lives or owns property just north of the development off of eighty-eighth Street. And apparently there was some work that was done by the developer's contractor on private property. I'm not sure the extent of the work, but I was told that they removed a old bituminous trail that was on private property. And so we're in the midst of investigating that work. The contractor will be staking the property line so that we can clearly identify where the work was completed. And then the developer has told me that they will restore the property if it was disturbed on private property to its original condition. So that's kind of where we're at. We're still investigating the work. But we should have some, some good answers by the end of this week.
And they did say the developer did make a commitment to restore the property and we have the escrow that we can use for, to cover those costs if
If needed, yes, sir.
Next question I have. Kim, do you have any updates on the property eighty-six fifty, Sixtieth Street North? Neighbors to the, the temple that were, had some complaints there. I think there's potentially some movement there from the city in regard, response to that?
That's been turned over to the attorney?
Okay, okay. And then, do we have any update on scheduling the meeting with the BCW, the Brown's Creek Watershead, on that meeting that they wanted to have to talk about their tenure management plan and get meeting with the BCW, the Brown's Creek Watershed District, on that meeting that they wanted to have to talk about their tenure management plan and get our input on that?
Mayor, councilmembers, I have not heard from all of staff about their availability.
Okay, Brad, Brad, you still with us?
Sorry, yes, I am.
Yeah. Brad, you want to give an update on the staff meeting with the Brown's Creek Watershed District to provide input to their 10-year management plan, which we also need to incorporate into our own comp plan?
Yeah, so, you know, as the, the city administrator, Nelson, she's working on setting up a meeting with Karen at Brown's Creek Watershed District. So we're hopeful that we can have that meeting this week. If not, hopefully next week, so.
Is that true? Kim, are you actually setting up a meeting?
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. I have checked with the staff, the city staff about their availability for a meeting.
All right, so it's pending, it's pending. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Let's see, city council reports feature agenda items. Anything from council members there?
I think we talked about, feel free to correct me, but I think we talked about revisiting whether we want to do a planning commission around this time. So maybe in December, we could put it on the agenda to talk about whether we want to do a planning commission. I know we initially talked about it early in the year and we thought it was maybe a little too early and that we'd reassess at the end of the year.
Yep, I recall that. And I think we had, what we talked about that time was we're going to take a look at how many applications that would have been reviewed by the planning commission. So is that, that's something that we can add as an agenda item to see where we're at, get some metrics and try to make a decision on if it makes sense to spin up the, the planning commission? So we can add that to the agenda for December. Anything else? You go back over there, Greg? I have a couple. So last week I met with the Modem Media School District, city leaders update where different communities under the school district, Modem Media, Hugo, Delwood, Willery, Grant. Of course, we talked about things that are kind of affecting the different communities. And Modem Media's update was they're building a trail through the Catherine Abbott Echo Shores to OH Anderson. And they are applying for grants to hire additional firefighters. And they indicated that in the future they may, may wish to partner with Grant for fire services. So right now we, we're kind of tied into our contract with Stillwater is really our only viable option. But potentially with their grants and be able to hire more firefighters, we might be able to do a potential partnership with them for at least part of our city. So that might result in a little bit reduced cost, but that's, that's in the future. Hugo's update was their residential construction continues to boom. Interestingly, their growth forecast was reduced to 5.6% by the Met Council. And a ceiling was actually placed on growth, which is kind of contrary to the, this girl like crazy. And that's primarily due to water supply, water supply concerns. It's been increasingly a concern of, of cities in, in the metro areas, water supply. And lastly, the, the Liberty School, they're, they're strong opposition to the campus. So they, they bought all this land and they're doing a lot of work, but they're still have, they're, they're counting on the future approval from the council to continue their, their full expansion. Right now, I think it was just limited to, to one building. So that will impact Grant Residence quite a bit as it's a neighbor of ours. And we'll see a lot of potentially increased traffic through our, our streets. So that's something to be looked for. And then Delwood, Delwood mentioned, this is kind of curious, that they have a potential receive 4.6 million in grant money for trails. And they were kind of debating if that's something that, you know, what are the strings are attached for that and how they're going to handle that. But I thought it's interesting that it's, it appears it just, just landed in their lap, but I think they're in the process of evaluating that to see. Because that would, you know, 4.6 million, that would build a lot of trails in a small city like Delwood. And then for our own, for Grant, you know, it is, it is a possibility that Met Council will look at imposing water usage restrictions in Grant within the next 20 years or so. So it'll be really important to stay engaged with the Met Council so we can be proactive in protecting our private well usage. Because I don't think anyone in Grant would like the Met Council coming in and saying, you know, we're going to put meters on your well and restrict the amount of water you can use. So it's something we, we need to stay engaged with. And then last week I attended a cable commission meeting. It was a Zoom meeting hosted by our, the SEC Suburban Cable Commission, which we remember. An attorney for the city of Woodbury gave a presentation on how Woodbury negotiated their first local broadband franchise in Minnesota. And this is kind of important because if we lose revenues, declining revenues year after year for cable. When, when broadband companies broadband only come in, right now there's really no franchising. So they ask for a permit and they get it. And, you know, the, there's lost opportunity for, for franchising. So this is relevant for Grant too, as we look for opportunities to replace these declined revenues. If we get inquiries from broadband companies seeking permits, then we can talk about, you know, potential franchising, so. Community calendar, who would like to read? I'll read it. Special election, November 4th, Modem Media School District. Modem Media Public School Board meeting Thursday, November 13th at the Modem Media District Education Center at 7:00 PM. Stillwater Public Schools Board meeting Thursday, November 13th, Stillwater City Hall at 7:00 PM. Washington County Commissioners meeting Tuesdays, Government Center, 9:00 AM. And Thursday, November 27th is Thanksgiving Day. All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess and then we're going to have, it says on the agenda it's closed session, but it'll actually be an open session. So anyone like to stick around for that? They may. And we'll be taking a 10-minute recess.
Still cold.
All right, we're going to zoom the meeting. Amanda, would you like to start us out on item 10, which was labeled closed session, but is actually not a closed session? Would you like to start us out there?
Yes, Your Honor. So just for a point of clarification, this originally came in as a closed session to evaluate the performance of the city clerk. And I just want to take a couple of minutes to walk through and clarify on the record, some recent events. So at the October council meeting, the council requested that I gather information to create a new program for the city clerk performance evaluation. The original plan was going to be that tonight I was going to present a new performance evaluation process for your consideration at the work session. That, the intent was that then there was going to be a performance review for Ms. Points at the December meeting. However, on Tuesday, October 28th, Ms. Points called Mayor Giefer and stated that she was providing him a heads up that she was submitting her resignation. Ms. Points then emailed the council and stated that she needed to, quote, "get the legal verbiage" "to go into a closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss the departure of the City of Grant Administrator Clerk," end quote. Ms. Points also communicated with attorney Nick Vivian requesting assistance for a closed session to discuss her, quote, "immediate transition out of the position." Importantly, a meeting to discuss the departure of a city employee is not a legal reason to go into a closed session under Minnesota statute 13D point 05. On Wednesday, October 29th, Ms. Points was informed that the closed session would be structured as a performance review. She was told that she could tender her official resignation at that time. On Thursday, October 30th, Ms. Points was informed that she was not entitled to be in the entire closed session and that the council would be permitted to hold the closed session, at least in part, without her if they chose. She was also notified that under Minnesota statute, she had the right to request that the session be open to the public. On Friday, October 31st, I received an email from somebody named Joel Holstead. He is an attorney. And he stated that Ms. Points has not resigned and did not want to resign. And multiple requests to clarify if Mr. Holstead is acting as Ms. Point's attorney have gone unanswered. Also on Friday, October 31st, Ms. Points requested that the performance review be in an open public meeting. Due to Ms. Point's request, the council must hold this discussion in an open meeting. I want to talk about the status of Ms. Point's employment agreement as well. During the course of this last week, Mayor Giefer requested a copy of Ms. Point's employment agreement. Ms. Points responded stating, quote, "I will look for it, but I know there is no severance package included if I resign," end quote. Repeated requests have been made for the agreement. As of now, no signed copy has been provided. This afternoon, Ms. Points emailed myself and attorney Vivian an unsigned agreement with severance terms that were revised from the Word document prepared by Eckbert Lammers. I have copies of both versions of the employment agreement here for the council. This first agreement that I'm giving you is the draft agreement that was in the Eckbert Lammers file and appears to have been created in 2013. It is unsigned. Please draw your attention to paragraph eight, the termination benefits. In the termination benefits in that document, it states that if she is terminated from her position without cause, she is entitled to six months of aggregate salary. Today, Ms. Points provided this document to myself and Mr., excuse me, attorney Vivian. And if you would please draw your attention to paragraph number eight. If you will notice, paragraph number eight is not paginated like the other paragraphs. So it's fonted out. So you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then eight is fonted out. The second to last line of the first page, there's a weird font. If you look, it says, "because of misconduct conviction." And then the word FOR, F-O-R, appears to be a different font than the rest of that sentence. The word personal appears on the last line of page one, and then you go to page two. Page two matches the document in the Eckbert Lammers file. So the reason that I am highlighting these differences is that the termination benefits listed in paragraph eight state that if she is terminated without cause, she is entitled to a lump sum cash payment equal to 2.17 weeks of salary for every year employed. It has the appearance that the second document that I gave you looks to have been edited as a PDF. As I mentioned, sorry, is there a question?
No, no, I just.
So as I mentioned, the point that, or the, the termination benefits in the unsigned agreement that was provided today is the 2.17 weeks per year. The version that has been sitting in an Eckbert Lammers file probably since 2013 states six months of severance in the event of termination without cause. The council packet from March 5th of 2013, the date that supposedly this contract would have been approved, does not include a copy of the employment agreement. So at this point, the council has a couple of different options. You can continue to allow Ms. Points to continue her employment as city clerk. You can offer Ms. Points a separation agreement with compensation and a final date of employment as determined by the city council. If you choose this option, you, the five of you should discuss what you would agree to for compensation, what you would like her final date of employment to be, and what terms you would be expecting from Ms. Points in exchange for that compensation. Your third choice is to terminate Ms. Points without cause. If you terminate Ms. Points without cause, then there would need to be a discussion about which agreement you think governs. The one from the Eckbert Lammers file, the one that Ms. Points provided today, or if no employment agreement governs, because we do not have a signed employment agreement to date anywhere. Your fourth option is that you can terminate Ms. Points for cause. It's important to note that under the statute, misconduct is a defined term. And it means any intentional negligent or indifferent conduct on the job or off the job that is a serious violation of the standards of behavior the employer has the right to reasonably expect of the employee. It's a, this standard is a high standard. Further, single incidents generally do not rise to the level of misconduct. That is the information that I wanted to make sure was placed on the record for the council. Because obviously this is something that we're doing in an open session. It's a little bit more awkward than if this was a conversation that was being held in a closed session. But that is solely the choice of Ms. Points. So now I turn it over to the council for discussion.
So our clerk has clearly indicated that she does not wish to continue her employment with the city. To kind of further the information that Amanda shared above, in an email dated Tuesday, October 28th, our clerk stated to me, "I would like to part ways as professionally and amicably as possible. I have been with the city for 20 years in January and have no ill will towards you or the city. You need to think about timing needed to go through the hiring process, any training time you would like me to provide to the new hire. I believe we, I believe we will be able to negotiate this respectfully and part ways in a friendly manner. Be very clear, I am not going to leave the city unbind in any way, shape, or form." So I appreciate those sentiments and given where we're at right now, I move to enter into a separation agreement with Ms. Points in a form recommended by the city attorney, including the following terms. Payment of $38,000, which would align to the Eckbert Lammers version of the employment document. Cooperation from Ms. Points to turn over all city property. An assistant transition to interim clerk as directed by Mayor. And waiver of claims. And before we go into discussion, can I get a second so we can go into discussion about this motion?
I guess I'll second.
All right.
Councilmember Cornet?
No, we're, we're going in discussion.
I thought that was a motion and a second.
Well, we're, well, we're going to. Do, do we want to discuss? I mean, is there, I think we need to align on the, the options and if everyone agrees. Amanda, do you want to clarify that any discussion points relevant here?
Yeah, so my understanding is the mayor made a motion, there was a second, and so now there is, is there further discussion about the motion? And so this would be the point of the meeting where if the council, the council wanted to discuss the motion, if there was going to be friendly amendments made to the motion, if there was changes made to the motion or just, you know, dissent of some type, this would be the part where the council would discuss that.
Can I, to clarify, so the six months essentially of like severance, is that, lack of a better word, industry standard?
The, the six months severance is, is definitely industry, industry standard for city administrators in larger cities. But it's, it is expected that if you are terminating your, sort of the head of a city, it's, can be difficult to find positions because it isn't like they're all over the place. So yeah, I do see the six-month number a lot. I do want to point out that the 38,000 is a little bit more than what is in the Eckbert Lammers. version of the employment agreement. Based on the, the numbers that the clerk gave me for her salary, and then what was confirmed by the city treasurer, those are the numbers that I'm running off of, but I don't, you know, those have not been independently verified. Depending upon what council wants to do tonight, one of the potential future actions in this meeting will be for a independent third-party verification of the financials, and we can walk through that in a moment.
Yeah, so clarification for the separation agreement, you would need some time to write up the details of that, and then that would be, would we need a, another council vote on that, or?
So if the council wants to move forward with the, with a separation agreement with these terms, or a variation of these terms as the five of you, or the majority of you agree to, then it would be up to Ms. Points if this is an agreement that she is, is willing to accept, right? She doesn't, she's not bound to accept a separation agreement, she's not required to do so. So then you would direct me to engage in conversations with Ms. Points about accepting or rejecting the separation agreement.
Any other discussions? We have a motion and a second. Ready for roll call?
Mr. Mayor, could you please just clarify the motion? It was based on two conditions?
Yeah, so the sep, the move is to enter into separation agreement with yourself, Ms. Points, in a form recommended by the city attorney, including the following terms. Payment of $38,000. Cooperation from Ms. Points to turn over all city property. Assistant transition to interim city clerk as directed by mayor, and waiver of claims. And, and can you just clarify that the transition, like what that would look like at a two-person committee? Or is that not needed at this time?
Yeah, so depending upon what happens, we would need to set a date certain for end of employment. So that would be something we would need to discuss now-ish to, to right after this motion would be, you know, when would you want the last, Ms. Point's last day to be? And then what is the expectation between now and that period of time, if there is a period of time? And then if there is, what sort of assistance you would want her to provide to transition to the interim city clerk? And the interim city clerk would be somebody that we would need to, that you would need to hire relatively quickly, obviously, to step into the position, as you all know, there's a levy and multiple things that need to happen still this year. So depending upon that timeline, that would need to happen relatively quickly. So yes, one of the action items that is available to the council, that I have prepared for the council tonight, if you go that direction, is to establish a personnel committee, which would be two members of the council, so less than a quorum, but they're empowered to make some decisions and, and kind of keep the lights on and do the things that are necessary in a transition period if needed.
And that would happen after, after this motion?
Yeah, yes, Your Honor.
Okay, all right. Does that clarify?
Yeah. Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Pramona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Amanda, so we want to talk about, what you've got next in your stack?
Yes, so at this point, I need to have a conversation with Ms. Points regarding her willingness to enter into a separation agreement. That, that does need to happen because obviously requires both sides of, of the agreement to, to happen. But in addition to that, I would also ask that at this point in time, the council authorize the formation of a personnel committee that I just mentioned. The personnel committee would, I'm just going to read the resolution if that's all right, because I realize this was not in your packet. Resolution authorizing the formation of a personnel committee. Whereas the city council of the City of Grant recognizes the importance of effective personnel management and consistent application of employment policies in ensuring a professional, fair, and efficient organization. And whereas the city council finds it beneficial to establish a committee to review personnel matters, including but not limited to employment policies, position classifications, compensation structures, and employee evaluations. Now therefore be hereby resolved by the city council of the City of Grant, Washington County, Minnesota, as follows. One, a personnel committee is hereby established as an advisory body to the city council of the City of Grant, tasked with ensuring that personnel topics are thoroughly evaluated and appropriately documented before council consideration. The personnel committee shall consist of two members of the city council, as confirmed by the city council. The personnel committee shall serve in an advisory capacity only and shall report its recommendations to the full city council for final consideration and action. The personnel committee shall consist of, I need two names. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, adopted by the Grant City Council this third day of November. So this pol, this personnel committee is able to assist in doing the things necessary to find an interim city clerk. And then a subsequent resolution will also be authorizing them to undertake duties of the city clerk as needed until an interim can be hired.
All right, so you, you need a vote on that first resolution now?
This would be a resolution 2025, and I believe it's 17, based on where we were.
And then do we need to name the, should we have a discussion?
Yeah, so you need to tell me who you want on your personnel committee.
So, Lindsay, would you be interested? I think you might.
I can, I can do it if you need to.
Does anyone have any object, is it limited to just because of open meaning?
Yes.
And there's no provision for something like this that's more of an operational thing, that's not really, okay?
Has to be less than a quorum.
All right. Ben, you okay with, okay with me and Lindsay?
I mean, if anyone really wants to do it, I'm happy to let them.
So it sounds like we have alignment, myself and Lindsay. And then we just need a motion?
So it's motion to approve resolution 202517.
I'll make the motion. A second?
Second?
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Pramona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
And then we wait on the second part then? Amanda, or do we have?
Yeah, so, so we'll wait on the second part. At this point, I need some direction from the council in terms of, for the, the separation agreement, what they are looking for, for a timeframe. So 38,000 is the payout, the expectation is cooperation, turning over all of city property, those types of things. Waiver of claims, that's pretty standard, and.
So what if?
But what would be the last day of employment?
Yeah, so in, in your experience, Amanda, working with other cities in these situations, what's a typical timeframe for a transition?
That varies greatly across the board. It ranges from walking somebody out the night that you have ended the relationship to, you know, a couple of months. And so it would depend on the dynamic, the particular dynamic in the situation. And potentially, it's something that, you know, if Ms. Points is willing to provide some sort of direction to the council in terms of her, one, willingness to enter into the separation agreement, and two, you know, the amount of time that she is willing to continue to work for the city, then that could be part of the information the council considers.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I just need to interject here, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, that was the whole point of the meeting, was to come to these terms. It was framed to me in a way that it needed to be a performance review, and that's absolutely fine. There was never any intention to have a performance review. Because of the situation and some incidents at the city office, it is time. What I wanted to ask the council was how long did you want me to stay in the position while you hire somebody? Do you want to post on the League of Minnesota Cities? Do you want to interview as a full council? Because then you have to post those meetings. Sounds like you want to do a committee, which is absolutely fine. And then what would you like, if any, training time? Those were the things that I wanted to talk about.
Okay, so I guess the question would be for training, how, and this is questioning both you and Amanda, what, Kim, you feel would be typical training time required? And Amanda, from your experience with other cities, would that align with, you know? And, and then it would be, I think, a question of the, the termination date, and then how that, how that affects the, the transition, I guess that's something we need a little clarity on too. So, Kim, what are your thoughts in elapsed time for transition? Two weeks, month, what?
I, I will honestly and truly tell you, and this is not going to happen, there's not going to be training provided for a year, but it does take a full year. Because you do things so often, it's annually, okay? We are at the time right now where you've got all your year-end reports, the tax forms. The audit does begin, what, in February? So I, I guess I would think a month, maybe two, but again, that is entirely up to you.
Yeah, training maybe was a, was a bad term, maybe it was more like just to, because assuming we're going to find a person that's familiar with, you know, clerk, administrative.
I would highly recommend it, yes.
So it's more of just transfer of knowledge of current processes, where things are stored, that kind of stuff. So assuming the focus is on that, you know, there's a lapse time, and then there's, you know, total number of hours. And so if you're talking total number of hours, Amanda, do you have any perspective to share? Like based on your firm's experience with things like this, with, is it 80 hours or, because 80 hours seems a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, it varies, right? It's, it's just, it depends on the, the relationship between the council and the person who's leaving. And it depends on who you get to step into the role, if they can hit the ground running and they need the list of passwords and that's about it, or if they need something more. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't give you a, a firm answer, but it really does vary. In this situation, giving the, given, you know, the events leading up to today, it would be my recommendation that it's a relatively short period of time. I think that that would be in the best interest of all the parties involved.
So that, let's say we say two weeks, that time would start after we find a replacement, obviously, right? Because.
Well, I think we would say that, I mean, we would need to find a replacement ASAP.
Yes. Yeah, but the two week, let's say it takes a week to find a replacement, and we're saying two weeks. Well, that, the two weeks would start, okay?
We need a dates, I mean, we don't need a date specific, but I think in everybody's best interest, it would be best if we could say it's, it's November 27th, just pick a firm day. Because it's important from end of employment perspective to be very clear about when that final employment date is. So that's why, I don't know that it works to say, well, once we get somebody, then you'll, you'll have two weeks after that.
I got you, I got you.
And the other piece of it is, I mean, we could say employment is ended as of today. Today is the last day of employment. And then the, the compensation is for, in part for the cooperative transition, right? And so it isn't that she's an employee during the cooperative transition, she's just cooperating with the transition and providing the passwords, providing the, whatever the things are that are needed, but the employment date would actually end today.
Okay.
Is it possible to turn that on its head and say, like, if we have a date a month, two months out, we're coming in the holiday season, it's, it could be difficult to find somebody to fill that role where no, and I don't know if this is possible, so let me know, like, no later than December 31, and then if we find somebody and Kim decides then to cut ties, like then that's acceptable? So it's, gives room?
Yeah.
Is that possible? Is that legal? Is that allowed? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, so you can say, you know, employment to end no later than X date, but upon, you know, mutual agreement by the parties, it could be earlier. And then essentially, if the city and Ms. Points agreed, oh, we've got a person and we're done, you know, that could be something that would be agreed upon later. The tricky part with that is sometimes when you leave some of those loose ends, then there can be future conflicts around a loose end. And so sometimes it's better to just kind of wrap up all possible loose ends. So it could just be no later than blank date, and the city just has to know, you have to have somebody in the spot, or frankly, your personnel committee is going to be doing a lot of heavy lifting for a while.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Getting you at least through your next meeting, which would be December 2nd, being here, being in place, then perhaps offering a couple of weeks of training, which I would be still on payroll. Either that, my last date, December 2nd, or the January meeting. Whichever you feel you have the most time for or need. Can it be, can you find somebody in a month? I don't know. And if you do, then the, you know, two weeks, or whatever week period, the two weeks, three weeks in December could be for showing the new person whatever they need to be shown. And if you did that timing, that would include getting the, the new person or interim clerk, whatever it may be, through your January packets. And what that process is, doing the agenda and getting the, the bills out and that sort of thing. So you could say, because packets would go out on the 30th for your January meeting, end date, December, my end date with the training and all that, 30, 31st, December 31st.
That is, that is nice. I think that would be, that would be good. Go ahead.
What are the mechanics of the personnel committee in finding a replacement? Will that be ongoing pretty quickly, and are we going to discuss that in December, or what's, what's going to happen there?
No, Your Honor, or Your counsel, I would actually want to discuss that tonight to start getting direction on that this evening. I'm hesitant to go down that avenue until we have a little bit more firmed up on, like this is kind of step one, and then that would be a, a follow-up step. What I can share is I do, there is somebody that I know that has significant city administration experience and is currently in an interim position someplace else and would be available in as short notice as two weeks to be able to step in here. Doesn't mean that, that's a right fit, that doesn't mean that, you know, you want to interview that person and make a decision about them. I can't.
It certainly.
Any of that.
It certainly would be someone we consider, but I think we'd go on a parallel path and, you know, do a policy with LMC and whatever. You know, I'm sure you, I'm sure Eckbert Lammers has a, somewhat of a blueprint for cities to follow when it comes to replacing staff, because, and the league for that matter, probably.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
How to solicit.
Well, your options are posting in the league, which you're not really going to get a whole lot, or you use a recruiter, which there's, they're expensive. And there's not, respectfully, there's not a lot of good ones. Unfortunately, I have been in this process in a couple of different cities with having to find city administrators, and I can tell you that it's, it's a mixed bag. But that's where, I'm not sure that the goal would be to get a permanent person in, because that could be six months. That could be a year, I think.
So interim, focus on interim.
I think the idea would be trying to find somebody interim and then deciding if that person is the right fit for permanent. If not, then you're looking for a permanent person. If not, then you're looking for a permanent person.
I don't know if that, I I I was just going to say, I don't know if that gets us where we need to be. Um, you know, then if that person doesn't work out, then we're, then we're back where we would be and without the benefit of training.
That's the whole purpose of interim, right, is to buy you time and there's nothing to say that. Um, and I don't know too much about, you'd probably know more of this person that you're having in mind. If they would have, uh, an openness to potentially, you know, go beyond interim. You know, and and how long of an interim process he or she is, she would be willing to take. So, yeah, there's no, there's no guarantees.
Yeah.
So the question then, um, is the December thirtieth acceptable for an a termination date?
The thirty first.
For the, yeah, for the end of employment, so termination, in a separation agreement, I I suppose it's a, it's not really a termination date. It's just an end of employ, an end of employment date.
And then, so what, Amanda, what are the pros and cons between extending it out um, that far versus doing it today and then, I mean?
I I mean, re- respectfully, it's liability, right? And so the 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 awareness is the relationship is ending and, um, there are certainly instances where the policies are, we don't keep employees after termin, after there's an end of the the relationship because of the risk of exposure or, you know, deleting files or doing some sort of of, um, uh, damage to the city. Obviously, those come with their own risks of criminal charges, those come with their own risks. The separation agreement, the way that the separation agreement has to be drafted, just to be really clear for everybody, is no payment on the separation agreement is made unless and until, uh, Ms. Points would would, you know, complete all of her tasks under the agreement. In other words, she'd have to continue her employment through whatever date it was that council stated. She would have to, you know, cooperate in a reasonable transition, she'd have to turn over all of her, um, city, um, property, et 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 cetera, et cetera. So that's the protection to the city is the payment, the thirty eight thousand doesn't get, isn't paid until all of those things happen. Um, but that said, I would, it would be remiss for me not to acknowledge that certainly, you know, employees have damaged employers before in the interim between when they say they're leaving and then their actual final day.
Thank you for that question. So right now I just need to, um, get a a council direction on the thirtieth.
I, yeah, so a council direction on last day and then an indication, I guess, from from Ms. Points that this does seem like a path that she would like to pursue as well. So that we can know that that's generally where the direction that we're headed. Because if she does not want to enter into, um, a separation agreement with a city, then the options are, you don't have that as an option, right? Then your option is you you continue to em- employ Ms. Points as the clerk or you terminate Ms. Points as the clerk. Those would be your other two options.
So does that seem generally favorable?
Mayor and council members, I am more than willing to enter into a separation agreement after review. Um, and am fully going to cooperate with.
Okay.
With all those things that will be listed in that separation agreement.
So the thirty first? And then we can say, you know, when this person comes in for training, because if we find somebody.
Well, yeah, so to be clear, if 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 we find someone next week, they would start working with, can't, we'd essentially be double, double booked in in the clerk position, but that's, I mean.
Yeah, paying for both. Yeah, correct, even if you say two weeks from now, we don't, we don't need you anymore. You are, you would still be on the hook for that, for, um, her, all of her, all of her employment benefits. And now we're talking about salary, you know, everything from now until December thirty first. A- and then after that termination date and after all of the the conditions have been met, um, then she would get the thirty eight thousand. And the other thing is, um, the, there is like a twenty day, you have the right, a twenty day right to to change your mind about a settlement agreement. Um, but that would be effective like the day that you sign it. So because we're talking about such a long period of time, those twenty days expire while we're still in the window of time. Does that make sense? So there's some like weird mechanical pieces, I guess, um, but, or technical pieces. But yeah, so you would be double billing, double booked.
But it 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 does mitigate the 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 risk in trying to find someone in a short amount of time.
Potentially, the sooner you can bring somebody in, the more that they're able to, you know, learn the nuances of grant, right? And so there's a value to that and the alternative is maybe you find somebody, but you say, well, we don't need to start for three weeks instead of two or whatever. You know, you have, you potentially could have some flexibility that way too. And the other piece is, um, you know, maybe it'll be easy to find an interim and maybe it won't be easy to find an interim.
I'm good with.
I think we need to get through another regular meeting and buyer on the thirty first.
So just so we're clear, buyer on December thirty first, correct, not November?
Well, she said the thirtieth, but thirty first is probably.
It's thirty first.
December thirty first.
Thirty first, yeah.
The termination.
So separation agreement, so just to recap, the parties generally are agreeing to, um, a separation agreement where the, uh, employment would end effective December thirty first. Um, the compensation for the separation agreement would be thirty eight thousand. Um, Ms. Points would agree to, you know, cooperate to to continue in her duties for now. Eventually turn over all city property as needed. Assist in the transition to, it's probably going to be an interim city, a city clerk, but m- maybe it'll be not, but assume as an interim, um, and then the the general waiver of of claims. Is that my understa, that's what the council understands they're agreeing to?
Do you need clarification, Sharon?
I need a little, little, little clarification. So basically, six months is, you're saying it's twenty six weeks of pay?
So we're not, we're saying thirty eight thousand. We are giving a a flat dollar amount. And that is in part because, um, when, the information that I received from the clerk and from the city treasurer, uh, when I I went through the financial statements the other night, I wasn't able to quite reconcile the numbers. I am not saying that they are incorrect, I'm saying I couldn't reconcile them. So just saying six months of salary is, yeah, is not going to. I don't feel comfortable saying that because I don't feel like I have a firm number for that. So that's why the thirty eight is just sort of, and frankly, it's a little bit more than what the Eckbert Lammers contract would have allowed.
Do you agree with that, that the thirty eight thousand represents a little bit more than six months of regular pay?
Right now.
I mean, it's. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, there is a a situation around, um, can't quite reconcile. I'm not an accountant, so a hundred percent could be me.
I mean, there's there's gross and there's net, so.
Yeah, so there's some things, but I just, that's where I, I wasn't comfortable just saying that because I couldn't get the math there. So, um, thirty eight is a a flat, flat rate. It, like I said, it is a little bit more than what she would be entitled to under the non-signed Eckberg Lammers version of the employment agreement. So it is greater than the severance package that, um, you know, the city had agreed to previously, maybe. Can't quite find any document to prove that, but.
All right.
So just to rec, so just to recap, December thirty first, thirty eight thousand, flat rate, flat payment amount, cooperation to turn over city property, assist in transition to interim, city clerk, waiver of claims. Yes, that's generally the acceptable terms to the council.
Yep.
Okay, you're shaking your head, so I'm like.
Yeah, I get, I mean, it seems like it's okay.
And then Ms. Points, that's generally accept, those are generally acceptable terms to you as well?
Uh, yes.
I understand that you and I still need to, you need to look at the actual fine print of the document, I understand that.
And and my only question is that that separation agreement coming back to the council or no?
So that separation agreement, um, no.
Okay.
Because.
That's all I need.
Um, the motion was
Oh, yeah.
To approve separation, a separation agreement in a form as prepared by the city attorney. So, no.
That's fine.
Um, do we need to, um, end the regular meeting and then talk about the the second part of the two-person committee? Or is that done within the meeting?
Yeah, so first let's get a motion or a actual vote on your motion because I don't think we've done that yet, right? So a vote on the actual, um, um, terminate, or sorry, uh, employment separation agreement. So did we do an official?
Yeah.
We voted to go into.
Not on the date, we haven't voted on the date.
Yeah, so so if we can go ahead and.
Okay. Make a motion for December thirty first as the final date?
Second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Russ?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Okay, uh, then we need to, so we have the personnel committee. We have a motion to move forward with a separation agreement. Um, do you want to do a small eye review of city clerk compensation?
Let's say that again.
So do you want to have a third party review the the city clerk's compensation? As I mentioned, um, the dollar amounts that I was given from the clerk and from the city treasurer when I was looking through the disbursement lists, um, that are attached with your monthly, uh, packets and then looked at like the budget to date documents that are provided on the website. Couldn't get the numbers to math out.
How far off, go ahead, Sharon. Sharon, you can say.
So the ones would not include the taxes that the clerk distributes to you guys? The tax withholdings and, um, so the numbers for some reason on C C task do not include the taxes.
And I think that I also took the twenty, oh, I just took the number from, no, I just took the number from the budget.
So there's the budget, like budgeted amount, and then there's the budgeted actual. And those don't line up.
They wouldn't.
Right, and they 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 don't line up and I get that, but, um, there's also the dispersments and if you look at like the monthly dispersments, I can't, frankly, it looks like you make less than, than, not, not more. I don't, I mean, I I it's it's not in the way where I think there's missing money. It's it's, I can't quite get it as high as what you guys are saying, not that it's higher.
It seems like we're we're pretty close and if it's okay with Kim, I don't think we need to spend extra money to.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it if, you've already agreed and it is your decision and that's in the separation, the flat out thirty eight thousand. I would just want the caveat that needs to be dated, like January first.
Oh, yeah, you would want it paid out, it can't get paid out till next year anyways because it, where your termination would be, yes, or not termination, ended. Um, okay, so we don't need to do that, um. Okay, um, we do need to do this resolution, so this is a resolution regarding the city clerk. A resolution regarding the city clerk, whereas on November third, twenty twenty five, the city council of the city of Grant voted, sorry, I need to, I needed to fill this in as we're going along unanimously to enter into a settlement agreement with the clerk. Um, and whereas on November third, the city council voted unanimously to create the personnel committee. And whereas the city council desires that the personnel committee, committee shall oversee the duties of the city clerk until such time as a replacement can be hired. Now therefore be, uh, hereby resolved by the city council of the city of Grant, Washington County, Minnesota. The personnel committee shall oversee the duties of the city clerk until such time as a replacement can be hired. So basically what this is stating is that in this interim period, uh, if needed, um, as oversight for the city clerk position, the personnel committee has the ability to interact with Kim, uh, with Ms. Points as needed for anything related to to the city clerk position. Um, and what that allows is there could be some moving pieces that are happening as we're sort of getting all of this together. And that just allows them to to respond without necessarily having to call a full, um.
Aid in the transition.
Yeah, of an emergency meeting for something that would not require formal council action. All formal council actions still has to come back to the council, this is going to be the data.
Temporary.
Yeah, the daily duties.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So that's resolution twenty twenty five eighteen.
I'm going to get a copy of those.
So. You need a motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty five eighteen.
Second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rod?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Okay, so. That's all that I have that I need from you for right now. No, that's not true, now we need to talk about, uh, interim. Um, do you want to have a special meeting within, before December to discuss next steps for, uh, interim slash permanent city clerk? Do you want the personnel committee to to take that on and then bring back applicants to the council for consideration? How would you like to set that up?
Question, could we have it pending whatever progress we're able to make? And then, um, we could, um, reach out to the council if we have appropriate updates to share or need input and kind of just play it by ear or would that?
Open meeting law viol, yeah, the problem is we're probably going to bump up against an open meeting law violation. It would be best if right now there was direction from the council, if it's yes, um, you know, committee, go ahead and start working on putting out the the, um, job posting or, you know, pursue, if you want the resume of the person that I was referencing. Please, please obtain the resume so that you guys can start moving forward on, uh, the interim or permanent.
So are you suggest, go ahead.
I, since I'm one of the people on this personnel committee, I'd really love to hear from the three other, kind of what their input is, so that way we know how to proceed.
Go ahead, Ben.
As getting somebody replaced will be of the utmost importance, I'd say getting it out as soon as possible, letting the small committee run it and then trying to get it lined up i- is going to be paramount to the city's success. So I think doing that ASAP is probably our best bet moving forward.
I think that was a given, but I think what matters, no one, is no, is if we want to have a meeting in between now and a regular council meeting.
In December, yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood, apologies.
No.
I would say then that we, is it possible to set a meeting and then cancel it if?
Yeah, for sure.
I just set a meeting and then plan to cancel it if.
That way we won't have to worry about, you know, open meeting, not the imposing time.
Because we, I mean, it's only November third, so this is, there's a lot of month. Um, so that's my concern, waiting until December to get approval of a job posting and those kinds of things, that's a lot of time.
Um. Because we would need council approval for a job posting.
Unless they authorize the personnel committee to do it now. Unless they authorize the personnel committee to to do that and basically they just want to see applicants once there's applicants.
So I guess I would defer to you three on what you want, since I will be part of the process regardless. So I'd like to hear if you'd like us to just get it posted and then once we have interviews in place, contact you or if you want to wait to give approval.
Whoa, I, sorry.
No, Ben, I think to what you're trying to save for is as soon as possible, you'd rather us.
Yeah.
You're good with approval, I don't want, if anyone else has strong feelings.
I think getting the application out and starting the process, I don't think we need to be involved in that, but obviously reviewing the applicants. I think that's just more cumbersome if we start going through the weeds on the details of the description.
So let's say this person, or. So let's say this person, or we find some person tomorrow, Lindsey and I, we review the resume, everything looks good, then do we wait to, I mean?
Then we would probably push out an email to the council saying, hey, would, we'd like to do an interview with this person, here's the resume, we'd like to.
And it wouldn't need to be a posted meeting, because it's, so it wouldn't run afoul of a two-week notice for a, a regular meeting.
You need to do three days.
Okay.
Yeah, so a special meeting can be three days, and this would be a special, emergency meeting separate, but this would be a special meeting. So, what I would recommend is, I can send you the resume of the individual I'm, I'm speaking of, I will send it to all five of you, but specifically, please Personnel Committee, take a look at it, decide if you want to have a conversation with that person, the two of you are perfectly, you know, you, you are, it sounds like you're fine to have a conversation with them, see if you would like to recommend, yes, let's bring this person in front of the council for a full council interview, then that full council interview would be this special meeting that we would set up sometime this month.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Are there, do we want to set that meeting right now, just tentatively, or wait to see?
I'd like Ben's suggestion.
So.
Cancel.
Dates that work well for everybody, dates and times?
Are we looking as, I mean, the earliest we obviously could set it would be Friday the 7th, correct? Like if I'm doing the math right?
Correct, because we need to get, uh, we would need to get a notice out.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Right, so really, unless we want to do it the 7th, it's any day after that.
I think the 7th would work best.
The 7th would work best for you?
Yeah.
And by time, what time are we talking?
Well, do, is, is 7th, is Friday the 7th open for people to do during the day?
It would have to be during the day, for me.
It'd have to be in the afternoon.
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Afternoon as in what, for you?
Afternoon.
12:30?
Or later.
12:30 would be great for me.
A little earlier would be for me, because it's going to be probably an hour at least.
This is also presuming that this individual will be available, correct?
Yeah, I just texted him.
Okay.
One quick question. Do we want to give it an extra couple of weeks, though, to allow like the posting and applications also to come in? So we have a more holistic picture, instead of like rushing it?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, but it's two-stage interim, and then we also will be looking for, you know, interim is just a stopgap that could potentially lead into, you know, regular full-time, but will, it's a parallel path. Is that?
Yeah, I think that there isn't any hard-fast rules. Okay, so it sounds like this person is open Friday afternoon. There are hard and fast rules for how you have to, how you go about hiring other than the meetings need to be open to the public, but that's it.
So I, I just have a, my, my back's against the wall, because I have to pick up the kids, and I probably have to leave no later than 1:45, so earlier is better for me, like, you know, 11:30, something like that. But a- a- again, that's just, that's just me.
Okay, 12.
12 o'clock, okay for everyone?
12 would work.
And is this being posted as a work session?
Uh, it will be posted as a special meeting.
Special meeting. And the, the special meeting is just strictly interview candidate for interim city clerk.
And for confirmation, is this an in-person meeting here? Or would be by Zoom, or somewhere else?
12 o'clock works, uh, well, that's, you have to, where, where do you want the meeting?
Second. What did you say?
Where do we want to have it?
Oh.
Here.
Do we have the option of Zoom?
Yes, you can have, you can, you can have everybody except for one person via Zoom, but somebody, one person, at least one person needs to be here. You all need to be able to see and hear each other, and you have to take votes via roll call, but there really isn't a, necessarily a vote per se in this situation.
I can be here.
I'm, I'm fine being here, I just want to confirm.
Yeah, I can be here, I mean, like I said, this is.
Okay.
If I have to leave, I have to leave.
So, okay, so this person, I will circulate their, their resume. You can plan a meeting with them on Friday at noon here. And for clarification, would you like either myself or Ms. Points to be at this meeting?
Is it either or?
Or, no, it could be both, just making sure you understand, I, we know who, who else you want at the meeting besides you and the candidate.
What's typical?
Um, I would say I'm in probably half of the interviews for city administrator positions, nobody else. I don't do any other, I'm not in any other interviews. Yeah, I would say half, maybe last.
I think if you were just to provide any kind of relevant, you know, typical questions, where I don't think you n- n- necessarily have to be here, if you just forward like whatever you typically use when you do meet.
Okay.
Does that sound okay with you?
That makes sense.
So you're saying noon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, noon. Yep.
So, I also want to clarify, that meeting won't be taped?
No.
No, we don't need, no.
So then as to the posting, do we have approval to start posting, correct? Without having anyone else need to, just the Personnel Committee approving that posting? Is that accurate?
Yeah, we can start tomorrow.
Okay. So then you also have the authority to create the job description, right?
Right.
So I did find a job description in our files from a long time ago, I will send that to the two of you, I'm not pretending that it's good, or, you know, anything like that, it was just what I found in Grant's files from.
Yeah, we, we could.
Forty years, so, things have changed.
We could look at that, probably get more useful information from the League of Minnesota Cities, but, yeah, forward it to us.
Okay.
So are you then, do you want an agenda for this meeting? What, do you want packets, what do, what do you want?
So.
I will post the meeting in terms of, yeah, special meeting.
And the agenda is interview candidate for interim city clerk position. This person's identity is considered private data right now, so we probably don't, we won't be providing any public packet information on this one.
Interview candidate for interim clerk.
Right. Because technically, their data is private until they are a finalist.
Okay.
This isn't really a finalist situation, it's just sort of a meet and greet, I don't know, I don't know how to call it. Okay, I think now I have everything I need.
Now we can do a motion.
Now you can be done.
I can get a motion adjourned.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. Everyone say, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.